Okay. Good evening, welcome to everybody, all of our visitors and our guests. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'd like to call to order this very first regular meeting of the Pickle City Schools Board of Education, January 27, 2022. We have Melinda Glazer here, our Assistant Treasurer, filling in for Mr. Jeremy because he is ill tonight. So would you like to call roll?
Yes. Kelly McMackin?
Here.
Shawn Ford?
Here.
Clint Bostick?
Here.
Steve Frazier?
Here.
And Shawn Mitchell?
Here.
Okay, everyone, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. You've all had a chance to review the minutes from our last regular meeting in December and our organizational meeting. Are there any changes that anyone noticed that needed to be made? Okay. Otherwise, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The meeting minutes are approved. Okay, our first big thing, we have a special presentation for tonight.
Each month, the board is invited to select somebody that they would like to do a special recognition of, and it can be somebody from the community, a staff member or a student. And this month, Trishawn Ford has nominated some people to be specially recognized, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Can we go up there?
Sure. Make sure you're in that microphone though, so that the people at home can hear.
All right. Thank you. What a crazy year this has been. Before me, I got four plaques of staff members who have passed away this year. It's very unusual for a school system to lose one person during the year, but we've lost four just in the first half of this year. And our hearts are broken and our hearts and our prayers and thoughts go out to all the family members. But I thought it was a good idea that we sat here for today and just recognized them. Okay? We took the time to pay respects to them. So we have four of them. First, Mr. Keith Stoller. Keith Stoller began working for Pickle City Schools in 2013. Superintendent Dwayne Thompson remembered Mr. Stoller by saying, "He was a true asset in every role he played in our district. He was willing and able to help in so many ways and had such a wide skill set and strong work ethic. More than that, he was kind and had a great sense of humor." Mr. Stoller was also recognized for his contributions to the district in 2016, when he received the honor of Support Staff Member of the Year. So I would like to invite his family member up here to receive an award for him. All right, next one is Judy Nickel. Mrs. Nickel taught for 28 years, 26 years for, or 26 of those for Pickle City Schools. Spring Creek Principal Ross Loudenbeck remembers Mrs. Nickel by saying, "Judy will always be remembered as a loving, dedicated, and caring teacher with a giant heart for children. Her passion for teaching was recognized by the many lives she touched throughout her career." Mrs. Nickel's daughter Megan preceded her in death one week prior to her passing. She will be greatly missed by her family at home and her family at Spring Creek. So will you please come up and receive your award? All right. Next is Joyce Pitsenberger. Mrs. Pitsenberger began her career for Pickle City Schools in 2003 as an aide at Wilder Intermediate School. She transitioned to her position at Pickle High School in 2006. Vice Principal Darrell Height recalls Mrs. Pitsenberger as being "a very caring and patient person." Joyce loved working with students and helping them achieve higher levels of success. She had a special ability to build relationships with students and to make sure they were on the right track with their schooling and personal choices. She would always go out of her way to recognize student accomplishments and provide needed support and make students feel special. All right. Mrs. Riley, Tony Riley. Mrs. Riley began her career at Pickle City Schools in 2014 as a Pickle High School Guidance Counselor before moving to the Pickle Junior High School. As a fierce fighter against cancer, she made every day count. Pickle Junior High School Principal Mr. Clark recalls, "Tony was the kind of educator that we all strive to be. She cared deeply for her students and for her coworkers. She made every day better for anybody that she was around. Her fun-loving nature was contagious, and we will miss her deeply at Pickle Junior High School." Family meant the world to Mrs. Riley. She adored her husband David and their five-year-old son Braxton. Our thoughts and prayers are with them as they continue to carry on the many family traditions they started together. In Mrs. Riley's own words, "They truly live. Her zeal for life was a true example for us all." And I personally knew Mrs. Riley. She was one of my wife's really good friends, and so I'm very sorry for your guys' loss. So we're sorry. So we just want you guys to know, we wanted to take this time, as I said, to do this and to let you know that you are always in our thoughts and prayers. And if you need anything, please do not hesitate to call anyone in this room. So, so sorry for your guys' loss.
Welcome to the list.
Okay, thank you, thank you guys all again for coming, and please know that your loved one meant a tremendous amount to their students and to us too. So if you would like to go, you are more than welcome to go now, or you can stay and enjoy our meeting.
I would love to give a family shout-out out front while I'm going to follow you.
Yeah. Do it now? Okay. Yeah, but you did a good job. Bye.
You too.
Bye. Okay. Did anyone have any questions or thoughts on the agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The agenda has been approved. So now we're going to go ahead with the Upper Valley Career Center report. Mr. Bostick, do you have anything to share?
I got three quick things I want to go over. First of all, I just wanted to announce that Upper Valley Board Meeting in April, on April 25th, will be at Pickle High School. We're going there, and then I think we're going to have a tour. I don't know, Dwayne, if he's gotten ahold of you, but...
We've talked. I didn't have the date yet, but I knew they were going to...
I think they wanted to see mostly their programs, and so, you know, that's going to be really neat. And, you know, I just wanted to mention something. We have a program ran by a lady by the name of Sarah Quick. It's called the Adult Aspire Program. They did a presentation for the adult education. And they get students or anybody that wants to get a GED, and there's a couple of tracks to do that. And she gets them in, and it's incredible. They brought three people with their success stories. So that was, that was really a neat success thing they've got going. Third thing, and Jeremy's not here, I wanted to tell him, Anthony, our Treasurer, received our first monies on the new formula. So I wanted to tell Jeremy, but he's not here, so will you tell Jeremy tomorrow, please? So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. For hearing of the public on agenda items, I don't, there's nothing. Okay. So we'll move on to the Treasurer's Report. Ms. Melinda?
For the audit update, they are, should be finished here in the next couple of days with that. And then for the mid-fiscal year financial update, we are right about where we should be for being middle of the school year now, or middle of the fiscal year. And if we can continue down this path, we should finish in the black.
All right. So on to the Treasurer's Agenda with Ms. Melinda.
Are there any questions about the monthly financial reports? Any questions about the payroll adjustments, the VA contract agreement?
Okay. After hearing the agenda, are there any additional questions from anyone? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the Treasurer's Agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we need to call roll or no? Since we're not... We do. Okay. Can you please call roll?
Shawn Mitchell?
Here.
Steve Frazier?
Here.
All right. Sorry.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Hi.
And Mrs. McMackin?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. The Treasurer Agenda is approved. So on to the Superintendent's Report with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Each month, we try to do an update of the work that's happening in the buildings. We just finished the first semester, so I thought it would be nice if the building principals could give a little bit of a summary, just a quick summary on how the first semester went and maybe a little bit of a peek on some of the work and where they're heading. Mr. Clark is not here tonight to represent the junior high school, but we do have the other buildings, so who would like to start? No one's making eye contact.
First in, first out.
And Ross and I are going to go together for some of the things that we're doing that go both buildings. So a lot of the work that we started off with this year, especially with our building goals, we were looking at our reading and math and our teachers and are we using the programs to fidelity? Are we getting the best results out of those programs? We had our building leadership team, where all of our members were in classrooms looking around, and it was just a small little snapshot of what was going on, worth five to 10 minutes. So with that, it was kind of some good, good things came out of it, a lot of neat things came out of it, and it's nice to get other teachers into other people's classrooms too. So, and then we'll go into the, what we're getting ready for here in just a minute.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback off that, I think some of the really good stuff that's happening, first semester there is, again, kind of alluded to this earlier in a board meeting, was the work that's happening at the BLT level, the district level, that's channeling down into our, our building leadership teams. It's then now making a stronger impact on our actual teacher-based teams, which are our grade-level teams. So I think those are definitely some things to highlight this year. And just for our building specifically, just wanted kudos to our staff for enduring the obstacles that we have. I mean, we all are with student absences, but also staff absences, so just want to say that, you know, with all that happening, still being able to show up and get the job done, so shout out to them.
And then here, what we're focusing on for the third quarter, our BLT talked back in November, December about a lot of the good things we're seeing and how can we make sure that we're still all kind of on that same level and learning from each other. So they decided, let's look at our guided reading groups and let's see how our guided reading instruction is going. So what we've decided to do is instead of getting five to 10 minutes in a classroom with our academic success coaches, our BLT, our BLT members are watching an entire guided reading lesson. They're taking notes, they're giving feedback, and they're doing that with our, our reading coach as well, so that we can talk about what were some of the strengths that they were seeing, maybe what are some things that systemically as a building we could work on, that we can maybe offer some growth on, but what are some things that we're doing well as well? We're getting ready to have our first meeting next week to discuss how our first month of observations or walkthroughs went, and the teachers are really excited to get into each other's classrooms. They've talked about we've learned a lot from each other, there's a lot that we have looking at incorporating into their own lessons as well, just based off of that.
Eric, would you mind just giving a little snippet about what a BLT is?
Yeah, so our BLT is our building leadership team. So what we have for our building leadership team is one member from every grade level, and then we have a member from our special education department, and then a member for our Title I department as well.
And we're essentially the same as Spring Creek too. I think another nice component to what is happening for the second semester is we're, both buildings are going to be incorporating the same methodology with the guided reading groups. So some of their coaches from Washington are coming over to our building, actually tomorrow morning, so that we can get this process rolling and then collaborate amongst both buildings on, you know, practices that are happening in the classroom data and all those things.
And then the biggest thing we've been trying to instill is that it is not, I use the word observation, it's not an observation, it's really a learning opportunity and a learning environment, because the people going in the rooms are learning as much from each other, and we're hoping to build that professional learning. I can learn from you and learn from each other on what's going on as well. So that's a good outcome we're looking for.
You know, when I first came on board, what I'd like to tell both of you is years ago, before you guys were here, actually, there was a competition between the two buildings. I don't know, a lot of people knew that, but it was kind of a, trying to, you know, and you guys working together, I think it's going to do nothing but be better, especially when they get to PCIS. That way, same language, same processes, they'll see some of the same people. I think it's going to help a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, guys.
So we started out this year, we wanted to focus on a couple of fundamentals. One, increasing our reading, and two, our math facts. So we've, all our staff, every third day is teaching, helping kids practice their math facts, also helping them practice their reading fluency, which is how fast they read, and getting literacy in front of an entire staff, no matter if you teach math, ELA, science, or social studies. At the beginning of the year, we take Pro Core Form A, which is a district assessment, and that gives a baseline for all our students. And we just finished up Pro Core B, we got a couple more tests and a couple more areas to finish up, but the results are showing that in all three grades and all four content areas, overall, there's growth. Students are growing. So that's very promising to see, getting back to those fundamentals and to seeing some of those results. Also, I'll reiterate what Ross and Eric both said about their staff, so I'm very proud of our staff. Without their flexibility, with their flexibility and their willingness to help each other, that's why we've been able to stay open and to get the most out of this year. And it's also refreshing, and it's something I'm going to take to our staff, to see that growth and to say, hey, your efforts, your willingness to cover for each other, our kids are growing, and that's what it's all about. Our look ahead to second semester, kind of nice to hear Ross and Eric talk about guiding reading groups, because that's also, we're, we're at the stage where we're starting to implement that as well. So that means that a kindergarten, kindergartner, all the way from kindergarten to third, and now four, five, and six, are going to have some of the same processes. Yes, it'll be at a different level, but they'll be accustomed to the expectations that it takes as far as student-wise in those guiding reading groups. And also, just to continue on with great instruction, focusing on the kids' emotional needs, what we've found is that even yesterday, we had a snow day, we had two kiddos show up at 10:30, and they just wanted to talk. They, they just wanted to talk and socialize, they wanted a snack, we gave them a snack. One, a couple of the girls didn't have hats, so we gave them a couple of hats, and it was very hard to send them back. But that, I think overall, if you want to see an interesting thing come to our building at dismissal, our kids don't want to leave. They don't want to leave because they're, they're craving that social piece that they've been missing for a couple of years. And I also think that's a credit to our staff, that they've really focused on building those relationships, engaging them, making those students feel like they're important. So very proud, very hopeful for what this next semester will bring, both academically and also emotionally. Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Messick?
I represent the secondary tonight. So coming into obviously the first semester, we were a little bit nervous at the end. Our credit recovery, to thank you guys actually for getting the funds for us so that we could support our credit recovery program this semester, extremely successful. We had, we've churned out a lot of credits kids have done that were behind. We got it, we're getting them called up a lot quicker than what we anticipated. Some other good things, like today, we actually got the opportunity to send a substitute home. We had everybody, we were, it was like, oh, we got staff today. So some good things there, that was, I've never done that before. So those things, just overall, we're seeing the, you know, I think we're turning the corner, no one could probably could see that also as well. I think things are, the atmosphere in the school has changed quite a bit. We're not seeing as many, as many discipline issues and everything else. We're starting to come together a little bit. You know, I still think we have a long way to go. There's a lot of our students who are not connected back to the high school yet. They're, they're there physically, they're showing up, but I don't know if they have a lot of ownership or they feel like they belong to something. So we really have to work with that, work with our PBI S team, and we need to really work on getting our student voice with that, just to find out, you know, what it is that we're missing. A lot of the kids that, you know, normally will talk to me, come out and talk to me, they are involved, but there's some other kids that, that we're missing, and so we just need to really reach out to them in the second semester. So that, I think that's the big work that we want to do with our social and emotional. Our teaching style has changed drastically. There's some things that, some changes that COVID has brought along that made us thoughtful to rethink, and the way that we do instruction in a lot of classrooms has changed. We see a lot more, especially in the lower level classes, when I say lower level, like the traditional, like algebra and geometries. You see so much more small group teaching, just because the teachers understood that there's huge gaps between kids that weren't here and who were there, and so we have to approach them differently, and we have to get these called up as we keep pushing those. And that's, that's always been the third thing, you know? That's generally not a high school way of teaching, and we've seen, like I said, we've seen a lot of that, and teachers have seen the success of it. So I'm going to assume, well, it's, it's going to continue to happen, you know? Now it's kind of becoming green, so that's, that's good stuff. And we have, at right now for the semester, we've already, I think we've already graduated 12 students. 12 students, putting on a walk. Some of these kids were kids that didn't graduate last year, but we got them finished up. And we've also, some kids that were in some, some different situations, kids that are ready to move out of our district and we wanted to make sure we got them their courses and stuff. So that's, that's a good thing. So we're, we're pretty excited. We're humming along right now, like all these guys are saying. The staff truly, truly are amazing. You know, you want to talk about, you know, a heavyweight fight, there's bam, 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 and then, but they just keep going, you know? They just keep going, and it's, they're, they're pretty special people, so. That's where we're at. Questions? All right? Come on.
Yeah, you might as well step up there. I would just reiterate, you heard attendance as an issue, and it's, of course, it's not people just skipping, it's the fact that we've had lots of quarantines, lots of sickness, and from probably the week or two before, well, I would say since probably Thanksgiving up till this week, we monitor daily our attendance, and we have had teacher after teacher cover classrooms and shortages, and we've, you know, sometimes Mr. Lyons will come over and say, I don't know if we have enough bus drivers for tomorrow, and we've sweated it a couple of times. We've covered really close, but the staff is very committed to staying open for the kids every day, and they've worked really, really hard. So collectively, I mean, they've all kind of said something, but it's important to note that they have worked really hard to be open for these, these students, so. With that, the next thing on the agenda, Mr. Messick, is you took a vote for your program in study, so would you review that?
Yeah, we don't really have any real additions for our program of studies this year. I think our biggest, we're, we're making a couple tweaks to some of the programs, we're trying to make some connections with Sinclair Community College with our aviation program so we can get some college credit for those things. I think our biggest work that we need to do coming in, especially after talking with Mr. Thompson over a couple meetings, we got to get more connected with the junior high to expand our class offerings to some of, some of the students down there. I think that's kind of our biggest next step, in trying to communicate that out, you know, with, with everybody. So, but, you know, we are not have any, we actually have no additions of new courses this, for this next school year. We just tried to connect more to colleges so that we get college credit. Two of those, like, oh, the other one is our law enforcement, pre-apprenticeship program. We're trying to get that connected with Edison so that they can get college credit for taking that as well. So kind of where we're at. Do you guys have, do you guys have any questions for me on that? Anything that we're trying to do? So. All right, Noel, you got anything?
Nope.
All right. Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Scott Bloom, our curriculum director, is going to talk a little bit about the ACT testing schedule and how very important the ACT test is to colleges.
Exactly. Good evening. So just, just to update you, in Ohio, we are still mandated to provide the ACT or any nationalized assessment to all juniors. We choose the ACT, some districts choose the SAT. That will happen in March, March the first, and that includes students who are at Upper Valley, students who are at the high school. We, the ACT is about a four-hour process, from the time you begin in the morning till you finish up. That involves four different parts, and they all have set times. It's just like a national test day, it's just that we give it here. To that end, it's really, really difficult to give the ACT to 270 students at a time. A typical Saturday ACT administration might be 30 kids. We will do that with everybody. We don't have the space to do 270 kids in one place. So what we will plan to do is to have all of the juniors report to the high school on March the first. We will administer that test using our teachers as proctors. We use about 20 classrooms or so for that. And all other students then would be on a virtual day, they would work at home, so that we have the space and the time to do that. It's just too big a change. A little bit different this year, we will also be administering the pre-ACT to sophomores who have shown interest in, in doing that. So we'll have actually two sets of administrative assessments going on, so that we can give those students that information, so they know, what do I need to work on for, you know, as a junior when I move into the ACT realm? So just a little bit different than we've done in the past, but it's the best way for us to administer to all the students at one time. That, I will say, that will change in a couple of years. That, that law has already been changed at the state level, and this incoming ninth-grade group, after they are through, it will become, instead of an obligation for students to take it, it will be an opt-in. So every student who wants to take those assessments will still be provided through the state. It'll be just a little bit different. So in a couple of years, that may change on how many students take that. But for right now... But for right now, we'll provide it to all juniors. Any questions at all?
What's the new count on schools that no longer?
I was just about to say, interestingly enough, I was talking to Mr. Thompson about this. Nationally, the use of the ACT as an entry-level criteria is changing very rapidly. There are about 18, well, 1,850 student, or students, 50 schools across the nation that are now considered test optional, meaning I can apply, and if I wish to provide my ACT or SAT score, I can. If I choose not to, that is also considered acceptable for application to that school. In Ohio, I think the list is, it's the majority of public schools and a number of private schools. I would say 30 to 40 schools in Ohio are test optional. And what the higher ed is starting to find is that ACT is an indicator, but it is not the only indicator of success at the college level. So, I think you're actually going to see that become more of a trend. It's not just a number attached to me from the ACT, but it's what I'm able to do as a student, because they're under a lot of pressure to make sure their students graduate. It's one thing to get into college, now there's even greater scrutiny on how many students complete their courses of study and stuff. I can tell you anecdotally, my two girls, I have one at Worcester and one at Wittenburg, they're both test op, or scores optional now. So, I don't have to send you anything. They want to see who you are as a person when they do the acceptance in the application process. Very interesting turn of events. It's something to watch definitely over the next couple of years.
So, if that's going down to test optional, where kids have an opportunity to not take it? Will that ever maybe trickle down to state testing with schools, where they'll say, listen, the state testing is optional, and we care more about you as a person, instead of how you do on a test?
I think that's a really good question. I think there will always be some measure of accountability for districts and schools. What it looks like, I think, I can kind of predict will change. I can't say that it'll never, we'll never have anything like that, but I do think there's greater recognition for the idea that students are a whole person and not just this number, and we can't weigh so much of their success in school on that, that one test, on that one day. I think we're seeing that change. Even just the recognition, I just read today, there's more changes in the state report card that are becoming reflective of that, understanding that there is a great deal of facets to education, and it's not just that one state assessment. So, I think it's a good question, and I think it will change.
It's such a good question, because the military doesn't look at it, the workforce doesn't look at those test scores, colleges never look at those test scores.
Right.
Nobody does. Schools spend hours and dollars and staff members trying to get test scores, because it's on a report card, that no one looks at after kids walk out of our doors the last day. So, what's really important, especially right now, in this time that kids have gone through these last three years with this pandemic and everything they're facing, there's a lot more stuff we have to do with kids than a test score. Colleges are recognizing that with the tests they were using. We would love it if legislators would see that same thing with this test, because we have a lot of work to do that really, we could focus on and get kids.
Focus on the kids and not the test scores, yeah.
Correct. That's a great question you ask.
I agree. I think it's, if you, just as an indicator, when we first began with the newest set of state assessments, just for graduation, students had to pass each one, they had to have a certain number of points amongst six different assessments. That has now changed in just a few years, where students have to be competent on two of the five assessments that are at the high school level. Meaning, I have to have a score that's just, that's even lower than it was originally to have a graduation requirement met. But at the same time, Ohio has come up with and invented multiple pathways towards graduation that do not include scores on those tests. I guess it's a recognition of, you can be a successful student and not have a test that was traditionally aligned with that.
Right.
And I think that's a really good indicator of, of the direction that the state is going, saying, hey, we understand that there are many, many ways for students to learn, and many, many ways to define success. And I think that's what, to your question, I think is what we will see.
Right.
Continue.
Thank you.
The article that you sent out today, I was glad to see too, that Charlotte Maguire, the president of the State School Board, is pushing for growth rather than test score.
Yes.
She said there will be growth measures.
Yeah.
Thank goodness, finally.
Yes. And that is what we're striving for every day, to see our students move forward and become more successful in many ways. And I think, I think we're starting to have that recognition that this one way didn't fit all.
Right.
And it wasn't producing things we could use to help our kids get where they want to be.
I think especially given the past couple of years that we've had, it's just, it's much better to focus on the student themselves.
It is, it is. And I, maybe that was the catalyst for it, but that recognition of, well, that year where they went away and nobody, nothing happened.
Right.
Nothing fell apart. We were all able to work with kids after that, and I think a lot of people said, okay, it's time to reinvestigate this, and it will continue.
You have a standardized test with districts that are still in remote, some have a combination of blended learning, some have stayed in every day. We've stayed in every day, but we've had a lot of kids that announce, so the continuity of education's been, you know, out of kilter. So, how can you have a standardized test that's going to measure kids across the state and do a value-added system when it's just all over the place? And it's going to take quite a few years to get back on track, get everybody as close to grade level as possible with everything that's been missed. It's really discombobulated.
We've got to take care of our staff and all of, all of you that are out there every day. It's not easy. It's hectic right now, really.
If you ever have more questions, I'd be glad to answer those. If you have more, would like any more information on what those assessments look like, or where they're headed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is, we want to recognize you. This is January, it is board appreciation month, and we celebrate that all month long. We just really appreciate everything you do all year long. You guys are great listeners, you're really good about how you think through situations and help us problem-solve, but you really support our work, and it's tremendous. You're all tremendous assets to this district and this community, and we really appreciate everything that you do. So, each of our buildings have done something for you from the student level, and we'll start this time with Mr. Messick, who will represent the high school, and he'll also represent the Pickle Junior High School with his presentation to you.
All right, our digital arts program, got you guys some, truly some rockin' We Are Pickle shirts here. Let's see if any of you guys can figure, this is our new logo that they're putting out. It's Metal.
I know.
Going to see if anybody can make a recognition here. And also, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
It's got, so I don't know if you guys are Metallica fans, but you should be.
Mine's the smallest one in there.
I did, I got that extra small, but the print went off, so let me give you this two X.
Those are awesome.
Those are cool. I saw those in his office the other day.
Those are really neat.
The students designed those, Mr. Messick?
Yes, they did, and this is the, on their new. I got to make sure.
That's pretty cool.
I got you an extra one.
Oh, okay, yeah, that'll work.
Those are really neat.
Just got to figure out which one it is.
This is two.
Way to be organized, Mr. Messick.
Well, he's doing Jeff's work too.
Nolan, we can help him.
We're not important enough for Jeff to come today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nolan, I'm sorry. All right, I didn't get the shirt. There's a shirt on. Well, I still like you, bro.
Getting up for a free shirt. Heath, do you want to go next?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a card signed by our staff, and also a little reminder of the important work that you all do. It's a little keychain with a little reminder about how, while you're not there directly, you are helping our kiddos on a daily basis, and it kind of bleeds down all the way from the top. The support you show our schools really helps us out and helps our staff feel empowered, which then in turn empowers the kids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
That was Mr. Messick. How he got the keychain sizes already sorted out.
Yep. And the cards in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rother. Washington, did you like them?
We did, just kind of put our video with our staff. I'm not sure, I know Eric said that he's got it.
He is?
All right.
Like magic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the high school kids enjoy coming out and doing that as much as our teachers and staff enjoy it. Now, I will get on, and they cut me out on this line, so I'll say something to them next time, but thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're just allowing that, guys. Oh, there you are. Disappeared, okay.
So, in here, we have some ceramic art tiles, courtesy of our art department, Mrs. Redenbow. So, let's check that out. And we also added some chocolate in there for you, as you can check out your art and admire that a little bit, so. Nolan, I didn't think we had one, but Mrs. Watson took care of you like she takes care of me.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. Yep, yep. All right, yes, sir. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you again for all the support you give to us. You obviously mean a lot to the students and the staff of all this district, so we appreciate you.
Wow.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you guys do, of course, and we don't expect anything, just your, just your acknowledgement is fantastic, so thank you so much, and thank all your students and your staff for what they did for us tonight, and just for being there every day, because we know it's been rough.
I'll move on to my agenda. Would like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations. We have a number of donations from grants, and also from the community, from, for the Pickle Junior High School Olympics, to, we have stuff for the show choir, to the National Arts Society, just a number of community members that have donated to the district for a variety of reasons. Recommend the board approval for the attached equipment, bus number one and number 12 for disposal and removal from the inventory of Pickle City schools. They're well over 30 years with, I can't even tell you how many miles those buses have had on them. One of them just wouldn't have even passed inspection, there was just nothing more we could have done with it. So, we always try to get two buses a year, and then we get rid of two buses each year so that we keep our fleet in its top condition, so. Recommend that, and then recommend the board approval of the Pickle High School program studies for '22, '23, as Mr. Messick had presented. And recommend the board approval of the adjustments to the ACT testing schedule for March 1st of 2022. With your approval, we'll get that communication out to parents and make sure that they're prepared for that as well.
Okay. If nobody has any other questions, can I get a motion to approve Mr. Thompson's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, and the agenda is approved.
Thank you.
So, now, Mr. Lyons, proceed with personnel.
You all have the notes I sent to you regarding the personnel agenda. If you have questions about anything on there, certainly you're welcome to ask. Most of those things are business-oriented types of approvals for this evening. The one thing I want to point out is that Mr. Thompson has given us the ability to be able to hire subs without having that four-year master's degree now. Two-year degree is what we're looking for in over 21, so we're going to be doing some things on social media. People are interested in coming out to have that discussion about substitute teaching, definitely willing to have a discussion and try to figure out if somebody makes a good fit for us in the building. And we're always looking for bus drivers. We did some social media outreach for that as well, and we'll continue to offer civil service tests for folks who are interested. We do pay during the training period, and we do all the training in-house for those individuals, so we're kind of always looking to add to our fleet of drivers, if you will. So, and then additionally, one more thing, those, there are volunteers on the list there as we do each month. If somebody's interested in coming into a building for an event to help a classroom, those types of things, it's not necessarily something that you need to be fingerprinted for, but you come in, as long as you have your ID, run you through the system at the building level. If you're going to be coming, going on a trip with a child, something like that, where you'd be supervising students, those folks would be, would need to come in and get fingerprinted. So, that's, that's kind of the difference. Just coming in to help out for that day, you talk to the teacher, those kinds of things, you can go into the building and not have to do the fingerprint process, so. Any questions on the notes that I shared?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Do we need to call roll, or no, since we're not hiring? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries, and the personnel agenda is approved, so no old business, so moving on to new business.
A request from somebody to speak to the board tonight, do a quick presentation. So, I'll introduce Mr. Chris Schmiesing from our city to tell us who's here tonight to do a presentation for you and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Superintendent Thompson, and thank you all for the opportunity to be on the agenda this evening. I'm Chris Schmiesing, I'm with the city of Pickle, I'm the community and economic development director, as Dwayne stated. So, before I move into the topic at hand, I just want to acknowledge something that Mr. Messick said in terms of the difficult work that the staff does day in and day out, and just how truly amazing they are. And I may be a little biased there, but I see what, what they have to do, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for the things that are accomplished in those, in those buildings, so. And thank you all for the leadership and for what you do to guide our district and keep things running smoothly and adjusting to the ever-changing times, so. What we want to talk to you about this evening is what I think you'll find to be a very exciting project, and I know we are excited, much like you at the city. We are continuously monitoring the needs of the community and assessing what needs to be done, and planning for how we respond to that, and then executing those plans, and this is an example of that. So, one of the areas where we're working diligently to try to make some inroads is to add additional housing stock in our community, to create additional opportunities for folks to be able to choose where they live and diversify the housing stock. So, create some additional types of housing product, townhome, fee simple stuff, senior plus type living units, traditional subdivision-type product, loft-style units in the downtown, you name it. All those things are in play right now. The one that you're going to see here this evening is a project that was brought to us by G.F. Bailey, Mr. Tim Forbes, who is in the back of the room here, and with him is Brian Weaver of Architecture, and the two of them have put together this project, which they are proposing for the High Street School Site. It's a 55-plus community, patio homes, if you will. And if you've watched what's going on in the housing industry, or you read the articles in the Daily News, you know that there is a significant need for additional housing in the Miami Valley. And in particular, I would say that the 55-plus product and the baby boomers who are looking for opportunities to downsize and, you know, still, still have that independence, it's an ever-increasing need, and we don't have a lot of it. The one area where we have it is Garberry Ridge Assisted Living had some additional acreage, they built a product, they were They built a product. They were testing the market in the first phase, and the demand was so overwhelming that they went straight into Phase 2 and 3 simultaneously and built it out in its entirety because of the demand. So, we know that there is a huge need in the community. Mr. Forbes and Mr. Weaver will, I'm sure, reinforce that with, with their data and their opinion as professional developers. I found Tim to be a very, how do I say? A guy who I enjoy working with. Every time we get together, there's more creative thinking, there's more innovating going on. He's always asking what are the needs in Pickla. He wants to understand what our community wants and what our community needs. So, I'm truly excited that we're working on not just this one, but two different projects with GF Bailey right now. Brian likewise is, I think, in the circles I work in, highly regarded as an architect in our region, as probably one of the rock stars in the architect circle, if you will. And so, we couldn't be more pleased to have a guy of his ilk working on a project like this. So, I'll stop there, because you've already had a full agenda. I'm going to let these guys do the talking, because they're the ones that know what they're, what they're asking for here. And I'll hand it off to, I don't know if Tim or Brian, who wants to come up first? So, Tim Forbes from GF Bailey.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair and Mr. Superintendent and distinguished colleagues, I think I'd be callous if I didn't tell you how touching your memorial time was. I really felt your care of these families that were here gathered. And I guess I was spending a lot of the meeting time thinking about Braxton, and thinking that as a child that's lost a parent, but also has a whole community that's going to care for him, and what good fortune that is. But my heart is with you. I also noticed that principals have gotten younger and cooler since I was in school. I thought, where were they when I was in high school? I mean, gosh, that was, what a wonderful presentation, and it felt like Christmas going on here for a while. And it was really lovely, and I thought, what a great gathering. I, what a special community and full of tremendous and amazing people. You know, I think we do platitudes often when we say what a difference a school board makes. But gosh, what a difference you make. And I just applaud your care and the way you represent your community and the way in which you love your kids and the deep commitment and care that you provide. It's remarkable. And I spent a lot of my career in higher ed, and boy, do I admire you. And, you know, you may take it for granted, but gosh, to be sitting on the sideline and watching you is like magic, and I appreciate that. It makes what Brian and I do every day kind of boring, actually. But, so I'll try not to bore you. There is a study that came out in October. It was funded by six different housing groups, and it pointed to something in the Miami Valley. It pointed to the fact that in the next five years, the valley, the whole Miami Valley, is 20,000 housing units short, which is a $3.2 billion problem for this community. Now, when we take that study apart, what happens is the, you start seeing where the weights are and where it's heavily weighted. About 62, 63% of the weight of that is almost evenly divided into areas. Millennials on one side and the 55-plus community on the other. And so, we are working, Chris Schmiesing, you, I recognize you think he's an Economic Development Director. He's really not. He's a fisherman. And he will cast a line anywhere, and he'll reel you in really slowly, and he'll keep bringing you to the bank until you think that his great idea was yours. And, and all of a sudden, you recognize what a terrific vision that he has. And I've bought into and really believe in a lot of Chris's vision for what housing would look like and what the need is. We've, so we've looked at market study. We're actually ordering another market study right now, because it's required by the finance agencies we're working with. But we already have a good sense of what's there. It's that piece that millennial populations are in deficit as are 55-plus. And I do think that the statistic that Chris noted is exactly accurate. The, when working on these projects, one of the things that I pay a lot of attention to is the more we can compress cost, the more we can advance amenity or, or increase the quality of product. So, for, for this particular piece of work on High Street, I've been working with a group out of Detroit. It's part of the group, or in part, it's a team of out of Detroit, Columbus, and Baltimore. And the four of us are working on pulling together a product under, and I want to be real clear. It's a little tricky, because it can set the ear off a little bit. It's, it's called HUD 221D. It's a market rate HUD product. We are staying in new market rate. Everyone, not everyone, but many people confuse HUD is only doing li-tech, low-income tax credit and stuff. This is market rate. The reason we like it is it's a 40-year term. It has a very low interest rate. When working with HUD, all this 221D, only about 25% of the projects that are proposed are accepted by HUD. It's a highly sought-after funding mechanism, but it's a little difficult to get. Interestingly, we've gotten with one, we lack one more step, being greenlighted that HUD is going to kind of accept where we're going. And so, we're excited about that. It allows us to compress cost and to build a better product, which I'm tremendously pleased about. The HUD does have some requirements. A part of the requirements is how density happens. The requirement that, when I went to Brian Weaver at Alt, the, a part of that requirement is density. They want a little more density than you oftentimes see. They didn't want simply a rows of duplexes or, so they gave us, there's a map that we have to kind of, and you work in matrix, the matrix community all the time. The matrix community that we're working in says 50% needs to be quads. So, we're trying to find some really cool, creative way to create quads for the 55-plus community to live in as well. But then 50% can be a mixture of duplexes, can be a mixture of single-family. And so, I went to Brian and said, okay, let's see how this pencils out. And Brian was able to create the, the, a part of what you're seeing as well as a site plan that I think is on another slide. So, I'm going to let Brian do the technical part of that. I guess I just, I just want to say thank you. Gosh, I mean, for every child and every person in your village, you are brilliant and amazing, and I'm really honored to get to be a part of your community for this kind of work. So, Brian, you want to?
Just wanted to reiterate, thank you very much for the opportunity to come in front of you and present our concept. We've worked for several years in Pickla. I really enjoy the working relationship with the community development folks you have up here. I think with the city, the combination of the city and the county, the authorities having jurisdiction in this area are really my favorite ones to work with. And it's not just because we've got vested interest in obviously trying to make this project happen. As Tim kind of alluded to, what we're proposing is trying to balance out, getting the density that's required for development of a property that size with the context of that existing neighborhood that's around and trying to be sympathetic to that. So, what we've got around that neighborhood is a lot of the post-World War II, you know, single-family homes, one-story, kind of the three-bedroom, one-bath type houses. So, they're smaller in scale. And so, it's really important to try to keep the overall scale of structures as sympathetic as we can to that, that existing context. And as Tim said, the, the challenge in that is, is balancing out the HUD requirements for the four units with the desire to try to keep the massing down to a scale that works with those existing houses. And so, what we've proposed is staying with a combination of units that are basically, it's a, it's a two-bedroom unit. The, they are all shared structures, so the smallest of them will be two-unit buildings. The units are around 1,000 square feet, not including the garage structures. The, the most important thing for us was to try to create some kind of a, or our goal is to create a self-contained, walkable development. So, there's a, I think we're at around 36 total units. And then the, the goal was to create a community building. And Tim, you may want to describe that a little bit more if there are some additional questions about kind of Tim's vision for what that is as a, some telehealth is part of that, but there's some other things that would be a, a little bit of gathering space. There's some other things that would, that would occur in, in that structure. I just did want to mention before we get too far into it that, you know, again, this was a concept plan. The elevations in the plans that you saw previously on the previous slide are still preliminary. We've already gotten some comments back from the city, so we're already beginning that dialogue on to some, some ways to improve it, to make sure that we can work with staff to make sure that, you know, whether it's architectural elements or the overall planning of the entire development, that, you know, we're maximizing what the community, the community involvement and what we're trying to do to make sure that it fits. So, with that, if there are specific questions, I think maybe the site plan might be the easiest, the best slide to have it, have it up generally yet there. So, just real quickly while I'm walking through it, we're, the proposal is to kind of create a fairly simple loop. There's already been some comments about flipping the, the orientation of the community building and pulling any parking off the main street internal to the, to the property. The property, you know, it's a fair, it's a fairly decent-sized property, but there are challenges once you start trying to get the density that's required to pull this off. And so, one of the things that will, we, we are proposing are, you know, kind of front-loaded garage units attached with the structures. But that is, again, what, if you drive around the surrounding properties, that's the same kind of thing you're going to see there. So, we can, want to, obviously want it to look like a newer product, but we also want to blend it into the context of the neighborhood. So, with that, if there are any questions.
What's the two corner units there? Are they, are those just additional units or are those?
Yeah, it's not reading very well. I don't know why the line ways are doing that. But yes, they would be, they would be double units as well. And then this darker line, again, I'm not sure why it's reading that way. This is actually just the setback line. So, we're trying to maintain at least a 30-foot setback off the rear property yards. So, the good thing is that all these are, everything that's on these surrounding properties are rear yards. So, there's a decent setback already to those houses. And then the proposal would be to, to meet the minimum 30 feet. And we've already had some discussions with, with planning and zoning that that's, that's an appropriate distance for us to make sure that those, those structures are all there. And then ideally, there'd be landscaping and a walking path. So, this is, it may be hard to see, but the idea is kind of a looped pathway, sidewalk in front. So, there's, there's a loop on the outside and there's a loop internally as well with the, with the development. So, it's really important to be able to create a, a little bit of a self-contained neighborhood in there, but one that also blends in with the neighborhood behind it.
What would the, the cost per unit be?
In, in terms of construction?
Price. What would the price be for the?
It's a rental unit, so these, these are rentals.
Oh, these would be rental. Okay.
Yes.
So, is this a gated area?
No, no, there's no gate. There's no gate.
Now, those are going to be two-bedroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I saw double garage, two-bedroom.
Yeah, double garage, two-bedroom.
Kind of that open front there or whatever.
Right.
But the back.
And it covers patio out the back. And again, those would not extend beyond that setback line. So, we want to make sure we're not trying to, trying to slam that back up into the existing residential properties.
See, the loop does have some similar, you know, similarities, the buildings there. They're already there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot to work from, you know, some fairly simple roof forms, but trying to make some entrances and, and if you, it's hard, again, I apologize that the site plan's kind of hard to see, but the idea would be that not all those units would look exactly like that. We would do some different combinations of, and we'll work with staff with planning and zoning to make sure that we do that appropriately. But we want a blend of things. We don't want just the same building chung. So, I think it actually works to some, as we, as we've worked through this a few times, I do think going from two to three to four units and mixing and matching will help with that, too. It'll create some variation. And then the idea was, just as, as you'll see if you drive around that neighborhood, you'll see some different brick colors and different siding colors. We want some variation of those structures as well. So, we really wanted to look a lot like, you know, kind of driving through that loop around the, the property.
How would, how would the rent be established? What, what are you looking at for that?
Tim, can you speak a little bit more to that?
Penciling out right now to about 1,500. That the, each unit is about a $1,500 rent, which is a little below market for the 55-plus right now. But it's, again, with the, I'm sorry, excuse me for sitting, excuse me, I'm sorry.
You know what, we might probably ought to have the other microphone, too, otherwise the people, I just happened to think about that.
My apology. I don't talk to school boards very often. The, the rents we're looking at right now, we're penciling it at about 1,500, give or take. And that's, again, the advantage of using the long-term HUD financing, because we can lower the, the mortgage that we have to do. And that would drive the overall mortgage in, you know, once it's, once it's filled up. That is about 250 to 300 below market, even in Pickla, for what a two-bedroom retirement-type community does. I, I do want to mention, there is no licensure work taking place here. It is designed for individuals could age in place, but aging in place services would be provided by an outside community. So, there's not a step down, there's not a, you know, assisted-living-type component to this. We have interviewed, and I'll tell them, because I think it's rather public, but we've interviewed Berkshire Hathaway as being a part of our partner in the sense of managing and handling the day-to-day management cycle so that it gets consistent, good care in that space from a property management standpoint.
Will the 1,500 take care of, like, the lawn or will the people? So, it's not an HSA thing?
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's no HOA or any of that kind of stuff. No. It's a, it's all-inclusive. It would only, it would take care of everything except utilities and cable. Yeah. But of course, I think cable's going away or something. I don't know. But it would take care of everything with that component. And, and back to the telehealth, of course, is something that's continuing to evolve, and that's really significant. And, but we also wanted a place where people could gather, where there could be, you know, the, I always say the difference between, you know, subdivisions are subdivision, but what, what makes a community a community? And I, I wanted this to have a community gathering place where individuals could come together for lectures, for learning, for art, for other life activity, as well as birthday parties, Christmas parties, and inviting family to come and gather. And if you don't have room for your family inside the unit which you're living, you've got an ancillary space that would be available, because we want this to be a place where people live fully. I did talk to a friend of mine this week that's, I said, how are you? And he said, great, everybody's in Florida. And, and so, I, so it does offer that benefit. So, if someone wants to live part of their year in the community and part of the year where they're, they want, might want to miss some of the weather that we're enjoying right now, they can have some options and be able to walk out and come back. So, we wanted to have that kind of convenience so that it really works for people's lifestyles and for what they choose.
How many square feet of living space?
Just about 1,000 square feet in each unit.
Living space.
Living space, yes, not including the garage. Right. So, we've got about another 400 or 500 square feet in garage. And again, you know, the massing. you know, the massing is trying to stay fairly close to what's, you know, in the, in the community around it.
Right.
And then the same, the one, the other thing I wanted to just comment on with the kind of, what we were calling the community building is the idea was to have the parking for it and then any visitor parking kind of shared in one lot. So we're not trying to create a sea of parking, obviously, either. In order to get, try to get the units on there, we would not have on-street parking as part of that. So, and as I said, there were already some comments, which I think were really positive ones from planning and zoning about making sure that the community face out on the street is not the parking lot. So we're going to do some things with the building positioning. But overall, I mean, this is really more proof of concept that we can get the number of units that we need to satisfy the HUD requirements, keep the massing in the context of the, as close as we can to the context of the neighborhood, and make, still make it work.
So if you've got everything okayed and had the financing and everything, what's the timeframe?
Can you speak a little bit more?
The, right now, the timetable we're on is it will take us a year to get through HUD. So we're starting in January. We are, we do have to have the property at least under contract in order to proceed. We do have to have the market study done. We've been working with HUD now for three months, four months, something like that, intently. And selecting our consultants and all of this. And they move at an unprecedented glacial speed. And so our best guess would be when winter breaks in twenty-three, we're in construction.
Now, do you guys have some of these in other areas? Have you done these projects before in other communities?
Right. So we're doing, not exactly like this.
Right.
We're doing a, we're doing a twenty-four-unit build in Troutwood right now. We are doing a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-unit fifty-five-plus community by taking the former Longfellow School at two forty-five Salem Avenue in Dayton, and we're converting that. And so that, construction on that starts in September, October. We're finalizing all the detail on that. We achieved the historic tax credits and ARPA funding and stuff like that for that project. So on the way up here, I was talking to the design team who's putting that one-hundred-and-twenty-five-unit project together. But that's more density. That's going to involve a sixty-six-unit apartment building. So it's, it doesn't have quite this. But from the concept of fifty-five-plus, you know, we are becoming, you always think you got it, and then somebody moves something. And so we always say we are moving on to perfection, if you're Wesleyan at all. And one day, we'll finally get it. But, yeah, this is, this is kind of the core of the
That's a neat idea. Yeah, I grew up there. I know that area.
Oh, yeah. Did you really?
Dayton, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Right, Dayton, Salem Avenue.
Yeah.
Area, yeah. Up around Metterdale High School.
Oh, did you?
And that flat.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah. I lived on Lynn Avenue right there.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Where'd you graduate?
Well, I'm from the south. I'm from Memphis. But I've been, but I've been in Dayton thirty-five years. So
Yeah, I'm a North Riverdale kid as well.
Okay, yeah.
I grew up in split-time, fifth-five-ohs and
Oh, okay.
So I would have gone to Metterdale, but we ended up moving to Beaver Creek, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, they're, we won't.
And I did want to reiterate what Tim had said earlier, which was, it's not just senior housing that G.F. Bailey's doing. So we're doing, the project in Troutwood that we've been working on is market-rate, single-family homes. We've talked about another site in Pickwa. We're really excited about bringing single-family, market-rate housing as well. So it's a really, it's a really challenging and fun market to be in because, as Tim alluded to, every city needs new housing stock in different markets. But, you know, providing affordable market rate, truly market-rate housing and figuring out how to work with these cost escalations is a real challenge. So you've got to get creative. And I think it takes really working, really good working relationships between the public sector and private sector to make things like this work. And looking at opportunities that may have gone overlooked by other, you know, traditional developments, so.
Now, I'm not the smartest man when it comes to this, but my house is almost three times bigger than these houses. And it is less expensive a month. Fifteen hundred dollars for a two-bedroom house is, or apartment is average. I just, that seems crazy to me, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, you're exactly right. If you are outside of a restricted community. But once you move into a fifty-five-plus retirement community, you're exactly right. Chris, do you want to talk, you want to give the numbers that you gave to us most recently? I think that would, may help with that.
I think the most direct response is simply referencing the Garberry Ridge Independent Living cottages, which I think you all are pretty familiar with. Those are nineteen-hundred a month. And when they opened it, there were six structures, each of them two units. And they were, you know, just kind of testing the market. They thought there was a need. The study said there was a need, but they didn't want to go too far, too fast. Before they had the first one out of the ground, they were all sold. They were all spoken for, leased up. And so the demand far exceeded their expectations. And now they're building out the other two phases. And I think all total, there's maybe thirty units altogether. And it continues to be a very robust response at nineteen hundred dollars a month. So it's a, it's not, you're renting half of a duplex, you know, and it's just an ordinary house in any old neighborhood. The, I think the exclusivity of it being, you know, a fifty-five-plus community within that envelope, you know what you have for a neighbor. It's, you know, in terms of age group and commonalities that way. So it puts it in a little bit different stratosphere in terms of the price point. All that said, exactly what Tim said, if you look at the comparisons in other markets, fifteen hundred is still lower than what you would expect to be able to ask for that type of unit. And we've tested that with at least two different realtors in the community, and both have validated that that's a legitimate point.
You know, I just heard, this was, it was either, or this third, so it was Tuesday or last night, they were saying about the shortage of units, that renting has gone down. They're, they're short rental properties. And they said, the average in the Miami Valley is fifteen hundred. My wife and I said the same thing you did, but they said fifteen hundred is the average because they're so in demand now. They're, they're short of rental units.
I think the other part of that, too, is when you think of the market in Pickwa, sixty, the average age of a home in Pickwa, the median age is sixty-five years old. That's a pretty old structure, comparatively speaking, especially if you look at our neighbors' thing. I don't want to bring us down, so I won't tell you their numbers, but they're much lower. And so when you think of the rent rate in a rental unit that's in a, you know, an older structure, that's got some wear and tear on it and doesn't have the modern amenities and doesn't have the same efficiency in terms of the layout. It has steps and lips into the tub and doesn't have the type of amenities that you have in a, in a newer product, and you have new construction and higher efficiencies. That's where you get that, that difference in rent rate. But we don't have a lot of it. So our point of reference is the older product, right?
Yeah.
But the little bit of new product we have has validated that that is really the market rate. And so one of the things that's really exciting to me about what, what we're working on, both at this site and the South Main Street site, is Tim's willingness and G.F. Bailey's mission being oriented towards working in communities that have realized where there's been a under-investment or a lack of investment for a period of time. And they're, they're willing to go there because it's an underserved market that, as Brian alluded to, some of the traditional developers have stepped past and overlooked. So what they're doing will provide not only additional housing stock so that as we have, you know, I can point you to any of our businesses and they've got twenty positions open, right? But as they're hiring those individuals, and maybe they recruited them from outside the community, we want them to be able to live in Pickwa. And Wayne and I have talked about this, you know, as you all hire new school teachers, they're looking for a place to live. If they're moving here, they're graduating from college, and, you know, this is their first stop in their career, where do they live, right? This isn't their product, but some of the other things that we've talked about previously and one of the other projects they're working on, it could be that, that first opportunity to own a home and start building wealth as an individual. And as, as these things happen, as these housing products become available, it satisfies that need, and it also starts to lift up the valuations of the properties around it. So it increases the tax base, it increases the values of our surrounding properties, and it's, it's a new product. So it's a, you know, it's at the top of the ladder in terms of the standard. And as we continue to work on addressing some areas where things have slipped, you know, we've got, we've got a good point of reference up here at the top of the rung, or the top rung on the ladder, that that's what we want to have more of. So, you know, it, it just has a lot of multiplier effects. And, you know, I, I think this fits the site really well from my own personal point of view, but also from a professional perspective. You know, Tim was asking me, what does Pickwa need? You know, fifty-five-plus is an area we have a huge need. These remind me a little bit of the zero-lot line product up in Deerfield. My mother-in-law happens to live in one of those. Two bedrooms, two-car garage, two of them smashed together. And it, the, it's not a fifty-five-plus restricted neighborhood, but just about all of those are occupied by a senior because it just fits their lifestyle really well. I know my mother-in-law's very happy up there. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chris, can I mention something, too?
Yeah.
I guess one of the things I'd like for us to think about, and it's a journey that I'm on, so I'll take you on my journey. My mom and dad are in their eighties, and I'm starting, I'm working with a designer now to build a house for them. Because the house that they built fifty years ago will not support them as they've aged. And here's what I'm including in the house that I'm doing for them. It's a thousand square feet. It has thirty-six-inch doors so that a wheelchair can travel through it. It has a roll-in shower. It has the, a smaller footprint with more open space than they currently have. They currently have a ranch like all of us have been in, this kind of chopped up to three bedrooms and two baths, which my sister, my brother and I grew up in. And it has a, it has minimal counters, so we're adding islands and more countertop space so that they have that amenity. We're adding volume in roof, so it actually feels bigger than the eight-foot ceiling that they've lived in all of these years. It actually lowers price on the cost to operate. So we're super-insulating everything that we're building, high-energy efficiency units, so that the electrical service, you know, when we built houses fifty years ago, gas was cheap and electric was, too. And so now their light bills, you know, as they've gone up to, you know, past two-hundred, now hitting three-hundred through the winter, you know, we can get that down to about a hundred dollars a month. We can get them into no maintenance. And so I'm working to, the products that we, that I work on are twenty-year no-maintenance products. And we pay a lot of attention that the people don't have to, you know, we, you know, you don't have to worry about something not looking good for twenty years. We don't have to worry about doing a lot of maintenance. My mom and dad don't have to worry ever about having to paint, having to, and because of, because I'm building the house next to my brother's, they never have to, we're about cutting the grass. They never have to worry about shoveling snow. They, and they have, they have the, they will have the ability to stay in that space for the rest of their lives. They'll be able to die there, right? And that, that product is missing. And I will say this, and I think this is really fascinating. One of my partners in the Longfellow project educated me in this way. Nursing homes are out. No more nursing homes. They will never build another nursing home. It's aging-in-place. And communities that don't have an aging-in-place product are going to see their loved ones have to go to another community in order to spend their last years. We would like for them to be able to spend their last years in a community around those that they've loved, around their churches, around their civic activities, and around their families. So that's a part of the thinking behind all of this. So I don't know if that helps, but that's a little bit of the, kind of the strategy behind it.
Just one quick comment, just to piggyback on that. One of the things I really like about that site is we have the opportunity to make it fully accessible. And one of the neat things, what you'll see a lot of times when you, if you look at these, these kinds of products, the American with Disabilities Act mandates certain percentages of units be accessible to certain degrees. So you'll see, you'll hear fully-accessible units, type A, type B units. A facility or a development does not have to have a hundred percent accessible units. But the way we've designed this, we're planning for these to be able to be fully accessible. All of them can be converted to fully-accessible units. And so, but that, it doesn't just apply to the building, it also applies to the site. And I really feel like this, this site is extremely conducive for what we're trying to do with that goal in mind. So, thank you.
I, I don't know. I like the idea. I mean, at first thought, I think it's a good idea. I think in that area, that would be a good fit, thinking it over. Because I know we were concerned about, we didn't want the neighborhood, you know, thinking, oh, my gosh, you know, what are you going to put in here? That would, that would be a great fit. They're going to be quiet, you know, unless we get some of the rock group stars to retire here, but, you know, with their garage vans. But other than that, I think they'll be pretty quiet and pretty good. So, I don't know. Looks good.
So I would recommend your approval, too, just as we did with the Wilder property, to let Jeremy and I, the treasurer, work through the process of working with them to see what the next steps will be then.
So move.
Second.
Sorry, he goes.
All right.
I'll be living there before you.
Pardon?
Welcome.
Okay. Mr. Roll call?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Ms. McInnes?
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for our next two items of business.
Thank you.
I just really want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
It's a pleasure to be with you.
Thank you.
I hope to spend a lot more time with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll see you in our meeting.
One session, our, our usual meeting, okay?
Yeah.
Hey, I think it's good, good job.
I'm going to bring you the best.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recommend the board approval to award the contract for the alterations of the 2022 project at Pickwa Junior High School to Archon Builders in the amount of one million five hundred and sixteen, one million five hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. You've seen the information. Archon Builders is who we've worked with before. We really do enjoy working with them. They were the lowest bid. There were three alternate bids that we're going to take for some painting and some fixing in the walls. This work is part of the levy that we passed to do the renovations for the junior high and high school and to make sure those buildings are kept up. And we've, you know, made sure the maintenance and everything is top, top on those. So it'll cover flooring, painting, ceilings, countertops throughout the academic wing, as well as other improvements such as casework and most miscellaneous projects. So it'll be the last phase of that construction at the junior high school. Any questions on that?
So do we need to go ahead?
Yes.
Okay. So can I get a motion?
Some, a second.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mrs. McInnes?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Okay.
Last thing is a resolution providing for the issuance of not to exceed five million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand school improvement refunding bonds, series twenty-two taxable. In short, what that is, is this is the twenty-twelve bond that we did for the elementary schools when we built those. We're going to refinance those. And in doing so, that basically will save taxpayers in the district two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. So this just allows us to go through that process for the refinancing, for the bonds for the primary buildings. And over the life of those bonds, then we would realize those savings for the taxpayers. realize those savings for the taxpayers. So it's just another way for us to save, save some money.
Good job.
Hey, can I get a motion for the approval?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Bostick?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. McBack?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And nothing for hearing of the public non-agenda items. So it looks like we can have a motion to adjourn because our next regular meeting will be on February 24th at 6:00 PM here. So can I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.